9, so I'm starting.
So you'll see her pop in.
Okay, seeing that it's six o'clock, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Enfield Select Board to order. And I'm gonna start with a quick explanation of what we need to make this meeting run well tonight. So I'm gonna ask for no cross talk in the background, just for the benefit of our minute taker. So she can hear, she needs to go back in the recording and so everybody who does come in online, we have some folks online, can hear as well. If each time you speak, you would say your full name for the minute taker, that would be great too. Like you to try to limit your comments to three minutes to give everyone an opportunity to speak. And we're gonna run through the regular agenda as posted. I do want to explain, this is a budget committee presentation to the Select Board. And so tomorrow night is the Budget Public Hearing. So unless you have something truly earth shattering that you think will absolutely convince the Select Board that we're going to put out our own budget tonight, we'll vote. But we will also be present tomorrow because there's a posted meeting tomorrow. So if most of your comments you're gonna wanna make to the Budget Committee because it is their budget and their meeting is tomorrow, which we will be in attendance though, which is kind of the flip of today. So just setting that so everybody kinda understands what we're doing. I am going to ask for motion for approval of the minutes. You have the minutes of January 8th and January 22nd in your packet. And I, Alice is on her way and I've asked her not to rush, but she will be joining us.
I move that we approve both of those sets of minutes.
Yeah, that's okay. Is there any discussion, questions or comments on them?
The only comment I can make is a paragraph on the January 2nd minutes, which 22nd minutes starts with Mr. Young and the Energy Committee etc. And ends with, the rate is going down in February to 1.8.1%. It's going down to 8.1 cents per kilowatt.
Are we okay with renewing our motion in our second as month?
Yes, indeed, yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, it passes unanimously. Moving on to board reports, so we're gonna start at the end of the table, Eric?
Interestingly, the Planning Board had another meeting revolving around the zoning rewrite to the hot grant. We got the report on our existing zone, zoning ordinance and had discussion on potential changes as we move forward. And the other thing of interest, the Master Plan Task Force did their kickoff for the second round. Over the next year, they'll be writing chapters on heritage preservation, conservation, energy sustainability, recreation, and then town facilities and services. So that got kicked off a week ago and we'll all be hearing about that.
There's no point in my reporting on the Budget Committee's meeting because it'll become obvious.
Right. On Tracy.
The Energy Committee met and essentially the biggest thing is the number of towns who have decided to join Community Power is growing incrementally. And as a result, in a few months after many of these towns grant approval and other towns go through the pipeline, the Community Power Program will soon be the largest private purchaser of power in the state of New Hampshire.
Conservation Commission ended up being canceled because of scheduling conflicts. The next scheduled meeting is Thursday, March 7th at 7:00 PM. And we'll put a little pin in that in case Alice has anything to report when we'll come back once she's here. Town managers report.
All right, thank you. As normal, I'll start out with the staff report. Chief Pauline is left in, he may be able to help us a little bit. But I'm happy to announce that we have made a job offer to a non-certified police officer that made it through our entire cruelest process. We have looked at many applicants over the last year, but as you guys know, many of them wash out somewhere during the process. We're a little bit picky, but we think it's important to find a police officer that would be good for the town of Enfield and good into our culture and our town. So we're happy that we were able to make this offer to a new officer. We expect them to start on the 12th of February. They'll be, I don't wanna say doing things in reverse because we actually think it might be a really good way to do it, but they're gonna be starting, entering into their FTO program, doing ride along, starting to learn the process. In June, they'll go to the academy, then they'll get out of the academy, have a little bit more training maybe, and we expect them to be on the street on their own sometime around September if everything goes well. So we're just, we're happy to fill one of those positions and we'll be moving through the year with that. We still have applications out, we're looking at them all the time, but we're gonna be, we're gonna be a little bit cautious when we hire another non-certified officer so we don't overwhelm our staff and the train. So we'll be looking at that moving forward. We're continuing to look at the police assistant position. We do have qualified applicants in the pool, we're finishing up some background checks and hoping that that process ends soon too. But that's really where we're at on staffing right now. Did wanna give you guys an update. You, you guys know that we got the 91A request for the use of CIP through the purchase of the Kicker Hill Granite property. When we get a volumous request, I like to come back to the Select Board with what that cost was. We don't bring all requests back, just some of the larger ones. And this one, it took 15 hours of staff time at a cost of $927. Moving on with that, I would like to thank the town clerks, the moderators, supervisor of the checklist, the Select Board who sat there all day and all the volunteers and workers from Election Day for the presidential primary. If people don't know in the public, it's quite an effort before, during and after an election to make one of these runs smooth and to keep the election secure. And they did a, they did a very good job and look forward to the next reelection if we have a share. So just wanted to thank everybody that participated in that and all the work that went into making sure that it went all smooth. Whitney Hall Public Safety Building update. Demolition for Whitney Hall projects going well and continuing to move forward. If you've read the town newsletter, you saw some pictures of the town offices downstairs where demolition is almost, demolition is almost completely done. And then they moved up to the library, it's one large open space now. So the office, everything in the middle's been removed and they've started on demolition of the exterior walls right now. Electricity's pretty much been removed throughout most of the building. They're working on plumbing, so a lot of things are moving forward. You may see if you drive by, they've started demolition of the vault, which they've removed all the exterior wood pieces and things from it and the concrete cutters are coming on Thursday to start taking that. We're seeing things move forward, we're still waiting for the shore land permit from DES. That seems to be dragging a little bit and as soon as that comes through, we'll give the background on the expansion project, the Whitney Hall project. And I'm working on that right now. The other thing you may have seen in the newsletter, the impact committee at the last meeting went through colors of the interior and exterior of the Public Safety Building along with finishes. And so there was a couple pictures on the back table, if they're still there, if people wanna see them. And if not, they were posted in the newsletter this week. Those are the actual colors that were chosen to, you know, give a pretty good rendering of what that building will look like. We're still moving forward, the end of February, beginning of March, getting RFPs out, getting the final costing back from the contractors that'll be building that. So we're, we're excited to get that project moving as well. With that, just wanted to give a little update, the Methodist Hill property, I know that's coming back to the Select Board. I just wanted to let everybody know that I'm planning on putting that on the March 4th meeting agenda. I would put it on the next agenda coming up, but I won't be here and I'd like to be part of that conversation. So we'll, we'll put it on the March 4th meeting agenda. And if you guys have any questions as talked about at the meeting, please get them to me so I can get those vetted prior to that meeting. On going along with what Tracy said, Community Power, I'd like to thank our residents and the other members of CDC and H for their work on the Community Power Initiative. Because of their hard work, Enfield's default rate of Granite Basic will be .081 cents per kilowatt hour. This is a saving of 17% off Liberty's rate and 20% off the New Hampshire Electric Co-op's rate. I would like to thank them for that hard work and the cost savings for the residents and the town. The Shed Street project, I've been talking with Hammond and their current plan for final building demolition. Shed Street property is early March as of right now. The coordination on timing is with Catamount, the environmental company, just trying to make sure schedules align, but that's what they're looking at. And then they'll come back in after the ground thaws to do final grading and site preparation. But I do believe once that building's down, I'll double check with our contractors for the environmental services. But I think we can start preparing an RFP to look at getting that property sold or out of the town tanks. So we'll be working on that soon. Planning and development update, Enfield again is being highlighted for our efforts on the housing front. On Thursday, February 22nd, Rob Taylor will be teaming with Brandon Turner of the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Drinking and Groundwater Division to do a BEA or Bureau of Economic Affairs webinar called "The Intersection of Development and Clean Water." It'll be talking about our efforts of, you know, focusing development around our water system and the things that we're doing to do that. So it's really nice to see Rob out there and to see him going a little bit over and above his work here to make sure the word and the good things happening in Enfield are being highlighted in statewide webinars for training. So it's nice to get us out there. Other things, and Eric hit on some of that, is on, you know, the grant for zoning rewrite is moving forward. The Select Board is invited to the meeting on February 29th. It's a stakeholder meeting at 6:30 here in the DPW meeting room. Of course, that's a public meeting, but we are inviting certain people, the Select Board and other members from around town to be part of that conversation to kick off the zoning rewrite, to work on that. As Eric said, the master plan phase two has kicked off, we're excited to get that program started. We will be having for the Whitney Hall and Public Safety Buildings on March 13th, a site plan review will be being held at the Planning Board meeting. And then just to update everybody, I don't have a lot of the details, but the Laramie Farm project up on the hill behind Jake's is still moving forward and they're looking at the possibility of coming in March sometime for a variant hearing. So that project is still moving forward slowly and we're, we're excited that it's, it's coming around. So DPW updates, they met with FEMA to discuss the possibility of some mitigation funding for the ongoing problems they're having on Lower Potato Road near the Canaan Line. As you guys know, that, that part of the road gets closed a lot on the Canaan side and our side. If we can get some FEMA money to help mitigate the problems there, it will be good for everybody. When they're not out cleaning snow and cleaning up ice this time of year, the DPW's been putting a really big effort, you may have seen them around doing some tree trimming and getting ready for spring runoff and keeping things that will come down in the ditches and keeping the roads clear. So just like to thank them for all that, that effort as well. We did get some initial data back from the two wells that we, the test wells that we drilled near the Marshwell bunk station. Initial reports are showing that if we put those two wells in together into one line, we can get 60 gallons per minute out of the system. And we currently get approximately 38 gallons per minute out of the Marshwell. So it may be a good project to do in the near future, but we'll continue our testing and engineering of that project. And then we've received the CCTV inspection back from the sewer line people. It looks good, we'll be putting some projects together, but it looks like the main projects is gonna be some pipe replacement, but very little that they're recommending. They are recommending pipe segments, be, do a thing that they call trenchless lining. So it's an interior, like push a lining through a pipe, so it's not digging up a lot of pipe to fix it and doing some interior lining of those. And then as Jim said when we were talking about this before, that there's quite a few manhole repairs that happen, some cement repair works and brick repair work and stuff to stop that stormwater infiltration. So we're excited to get those projects going and those are the, the three parts of the project that will qualify for the SRF and ARPA funding that we've already secured. That's my town manager's report, unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions? I promised to put a pin in and come back just, Alice, did you have any board reports for us?
No, even is meeting this week and I'm here to just.
Awesome, great. So we're gonna move on to the business portion of the evening, since quite a few folks weren't here at 6:00 PM. I'm gonna remind you, this next part is the Budget Committee presentation to the Select Board, which is their opportunity to tell us about their budget, how they developed it and have a discussion with the Select Board. Tomorrow night is the Budget Committee Public Hearing, which is the one in which the public engages the Budget Committee to ask questions. So unless you have something majorly life altering that you think would sway the entire board to try to make our own budget, we don't typically do that, that would be a conversation to have with the Budget Committee tomorrow. So go ahead, Demetri.
You guys have a printout or not?
I don't need a printout, I mean, I'm gonna watch your presentation.
Alright, so thanks for letting me present. Drive around for a while.
Yep. Dress rehearsal.
Yeah. So as usual, this slide is pretty consistent from year to year.
This is my fresher thing.
Ah, okay. So the Budget Committee worst at the time manager, worst at departments had to put a proposed budget together. And then the committee is reviewing those budgets and revenues. The objectives are to essentially maintain Enfield's core services and quality of life. The only minor edit we've made to this slide is that we want to make sure that the budget decisions we make are responsible in the short term as well as the long term. Levels of service or staffing levels have not changed. You'll see, and I'll talk about some increases in expenses in some areas, but for example, youth sports, but those are offset by revenue. But I also added water and sewer here because tomorrow I plan to highlight, not everybody in town understands that water and sewer are their own fund. And therefore, for example, if there's a loan related to the water system that is not in your property tax rate, even though it appears in the expenses in the future slides, there's intra-fund transfers to count for water and sewer. We have several contract pricing changes. One is waste management, I believe, Casella's five years and we were quote unquote lucky to have skipped the big increases during the pandemic, but that means they are hitting this year. And then health insurance. Historical chart, I started including last year inflation. Obviously, we all know it was much higher last year, it has come down. It's about 2.8% right now, but when I go July, 2023. Okay, so labor and benefits. So the budgeted amount for labor last year was $2.514 million. That has increased to $2.585 million or $70,000. That comes down to 2.8% and that's across all accounts in the general fund. So the town has made adjustment based on the compensation study and spread it out across two to four years to limit the impact on taxes. And as I just mentioned, COLA is 2.8%. I don't think the town intentionally aimed to hit 2.8. I think that just happens that way. Ed, with support from Malish, has also looked at pay adjustments across other towns. Those other towns were in the 3% to 5.5% range with an average of 4.3. And I believe it's fair to say in Enfield, it varies between 0 and 5 depending on the position and the account. And so I know there's been a lot of discussion about what are the raises in town, but I just wanna emphasize that the budgeted amount across all the accounts is going up 2.8. Cost of benefits went from $1.280 million to $1.448 million or a 13% increase. That's a pretty big jump. Out of that, $168,000 increase, $157,000, pretty much all of it minus $10,000 is health insurance. That jump in health insurance is quite substantial. More than two thirds of that increases the rates, increasing by 15.6%. And the other third is people changing plans. Operating costs increased from $2.542 million to $2.779 or a 9.3% increase. $96,500 of that is the new contract with Casella, which is a five-year contract, and then increased dumping for the Lebanon landfill. We had some discussion, which I'm sure others have had as well, about, hey, you know, the waste is getting expensive, but it's still a lot cheaper to have it organized through the town than it is to go on your own. If you go through the town based on information provided by Jim, it's $22 a month per household based on some anecdotal information from people outside of Enfield. It's anywhere between $50 and $100 a month if you go by yourself. So we're still substantially cheaper. Chet Street, as we all know, there's another $75,000 in there to get that completely cleaned up. Road maintenance has gone up $32,500. There's some money for a software upgrade for government compliance of $30,000. There's some extra costs associated with the temporary facilities in La Sallete and then utilities have gone up $30,000. If you actually add up all these big increases, you'll see that's more than the total increase in the whole operating cost, which actually means there's a net savings of $57,316 and everything else. Debt service, the big one, so that has gone up from $280 to $709, which is a 153% increase. And that's pretty much solely due to the two building projects for the Public Safety Building and Whitney Hall. And so the loan amount for those combined, I couldn't do math on the fly now, but it's, it's like 700, it's close to $700,000. And so last year, we only had part of the Public Safety Building loan, none of Whitney Hall in the budget. And this year, both loans are completely in the budget, so that's a big jump. Some other things to highlight, so the police department increase in budget was less than 1%. Ambulance went down and cemetery was flat. And then for completeness, the town applied for $2.3 million in grants with $1.1 million awarded. I'm sure you guys are aware of all the grants that were out there, but the big ones are listed. So in summary, the general fund expenses increased from $6.6 million to $7.5 or a 13.66% increase, with the largest increase being the debt service by $428,000, followed by the operating cost by $237,000, benefits due to health insurance, $168,000, and salaries by $70,000. Any questions so far before I kind of transition to the next topic?
Do you guys wanna wait till the end and we can always go back to a slide if you have a question? Okay.
Alright.
Thanks.
So, oh, I forgot about this one. So if you, if you look at the increase of 904, 47% of the increase of the loans for the Public Safety Building and Whitney Hall at 429. 26% of the increase is operating costs, which we kind of covered earlier. 19% of the increase is benefits and 8% of the increase is SAU. And if you take the big three, which is the loans, Casella and health insurance, you've got 76% of the increase and everything else is just 24%. Compared to other towns, again with the help of head cuts on data, we couldn't really pick who responded, but 23 towns that responded and, you know, the closest were New London, Granton and Sunapee. Canaan did not provide data in order to get anything from Lebanon.
Just last week.
Oh, no. That's interesting. Am I still on?
You are, but I think you're gonna have to reshare.
I feel like you're sharing a different screen.
Do you wanna go out of the chair and go back in?
Just click that up.
Alright, so across the 23 towns I provided data, the average was 8.9% increase in operating fund, 7.9 median. New London, Granton and Sunapee are listed, again, those were the closest three towns geographically. Increases in total appropriations were consistently the same, 10.1 average and median. Enfield is at 11.3 and again, a big portion, a big portion of that is the two loans because without the two loans, it's 5.3. Unassigned fund balance, this is the historical chart. So we're still meeting the policy of 8% minimum, but we're slowly heading down. So we'll have to keep an eye on that. As you guys know, it slowly increases where the goal is because you're a percentage of your operating budgets and those just tend to trend up, so you kind of have to slowly increase your unassigned fund balance to keep up. But we're, we're slowly decreasing. Surplus unadded is 281,000. The impacts above 10,000 are kind of listed on the right. If you add up all the labor-related categories, meaning salaries, benefits, you get to set like 79% and so, that's a mistake right there. Because the numbers changed, so I will fix this slide for tomorrow. So 261,000 is essentially related to positions. 21% of the debt and then you'll again see, I'll fix this for tomorrow, that the debt and the salaries are bigger than the surplus, which means that we've actually outspent the other categories. Does that make sense? So we've underspent labor, we've underspent debt, right? But the total underspent is less than the surplus, which means you've overspent everything.
Right, and that's highlighted by a not over and under category.
Right, and so like, if you look at operating costs, there's big, you know, big negatives and positives, but the net is actually negative, so the, the operating cost is overrun. Does that make sense?
Yes.
The Budget Committee is recommending a number of one-time expenses, such as Chet Street demolition, costs associated with town office relocation, some radios, repairs and a road survey, as well as culverts. They also recommended the retention for police officers and then also $100,000 to write on taxes because this year, because of the large jump, they wanted to alleviate impacts on taxes. That being said, they, they recognize that we are spending, we're proposing to spend more of the surplus than the estimated surplus, so we expect that downward trend. So we'll have to keep an eye on that in future years. So expense summary. So again, the, there's the 6.6 million and the 7.5 at the top, General Government Operating Fund, 2023 to 2024 budgeted, that 13.7% increase. Then there's also about numbers for the water fund, the sewer fund. Um then there's also about numbers for the water fund, the sewer fund, um capital projects and TIF. And it brings the node to total from eight point two essentially to nine point four, or that's a fourteen point eight percent increase. Revenues, estimated revenues, um are expected to increase six point eight percent. Um so for, you know, internal people on the public see there, the intra operating fund transfers of these big numbers, that is where the water and the sewer money is changing hands between the revenues and the expense side. So we see a little bit of a decrease in the licensing permits and fees. I think we've noticed this over the years, that it's not going up anymore, so we're trending it down. Um little bit of decrease in rooms, meals, I think that is to be conservative. And then we've included that one seventy from the undesignated fund balance for um the one time projects. And so the net increase uh in the revenues is two hundred and fifty two thousand eight seven one or just under seven percent. Um estimated taxes. So if you take all the appropriations and you do all the math on all these other items such as overlay work service credits and the use of undesignated fund balance, what we'd have to collect from taxes is five point eight million dollars. And that's a twelve pers- twelve point nine percent increase from last year. So because it's dangerous to talk percentages, I'm going on a limb this year. And I have the word estimated highlighted everywhere. This is what I projected tax bill will look like. Um if you use twenty twenty three evaluations for a rate, and so um this the school is going up three point one six. I rounded it to three point two. The town is projected to go up twelve point nine. I assumed that county and state education would up by pull the two point eight. So if you take the actual numbers on the left and you apply all those rates, you get a new rate, but the thing I want people to focus on is the six point two four. Because that is the actual increase in the rates compared to last year. Right, once I account for all of it. The reason why I want to focus on the six point two four, because I want people to compare that number to their current bill. Because next year housing values will change. You know, rates should actually come down because property values are going up, but at the end of the day, what we collect from taxes won't change. And so if your piece of the pie of your property relative to everybody else in town is not changing, and these percentages hold, your bill would go up six point two four percent. So if if your bill is five thousand dollars, that's three hundred and twelve dollars a year or twenty six dollars a month if it's in your mortgage payment. If your bill is now ten thousand dollars, it's six hundred and twenty four dollars a year more or fifty two dollars a month if it's in your mortgage payment. And so at the public hearing and at town meeting, I will stress this is an estimate. But the goal is, I've seen lots of numbers and percentages floating around to get away from percentages and look for actual dollars, because at the end of the day, people care about actual dollars that are wallets, not percentages. That makes sense? I know this is dangerous. This has never been done before in a public meeting. But I think it's important.
Real quick, if I may, that's also based on zero value addition to the town, which usually doesn't happen. We usually have some sort of value addition, so it's kind of painting an estimated worst case scenario.
And it's fair to say that we have to use the data that we have today, and since we don't have future data.
Right, well, I'll I'll highlight that assumes last year's valuations, meaning no no new construction, no
value increase.
You know, just like it assumes the county and state education are going up by two point eight. But I've looked at historical numbers, um some of them actually go down but then jump up. And so I can't explain why some of these state numbers go down and then jump up, so I just I just said it, assume it goes up by two point eight. And so the other thing to highlight is that the town expected that property taxes were going to be five point three million, and they ended up being less than that. Because it, and this is a process I want to understand better next year. It sounds like the state is setting the these numbers very late in the year and is factoring in a whole bunch of other things that then actually may cause your property tax collections to be different what you think they are at the beginning of the year.
Almost out.
So this is again an estimate. But so the your people's bills are not going to go up, you know, fifteen percent, they're not going to go up twelve percent. It's going to be closer to the six point two four.
And we do purposely do that, and we we don't go real low, but we conservatively estimate revenues and those things for that season. I would much rather come in saying we estimated it twelve point nine, and then we get it back and it's eleven percent or twelve two somewhere in there than go the other way. We try to do that on purpose and usually putting both usually, it works out that way, and it's a little bit lower than we estimated.
Um so I I've done this slide last year too. I showed the historical tax rate in the town against the tax rate. Twenty twenty four are again estimated values using twenty twenty three evaluations. This year I decided to add about the total town value to it. And so from two thousand twelve, from two thousand thirteen to fourteen, it dropped a lot. And then two thousand eighteen to nineteen, it jumped a lot back up. And so it's interesting to see, in my in my world, that's interesting, so. Because i- if you look back at the when the un- unassigned fund balance dropped, that's about the same time that the valuation went down, the total tax rate went up. And I assume that's also related with when there was a school being what's the timing of the school? High school project. Okay. And so all those things are kind of lining up. And so um I think we're doing good on the unassigned fund balance, but again, we're slowly decreasing. You just have to make sure we don't regress too much. Um I also wanted to add some statement again, I'm going on a limb. Haven't done this before either, so people are talking about, hey, we had a big increase last year, we're having a big increase this year, it's going to be a big increase next year, and it's never ending. Um the reasons why I think it will end is one, last year we had a ha- we had a portion of the public safety building, this year we have both loans completely in it. That is not changing last year, so next year's debt service should be very similar to this year's. Re- remediation for Shet Street is going to go away. Right, that property is going to be, that project will be completed. Hopefully, the property will actually generate revenue rather than costing us money. So that's going away, and then uh waste management fees, we're on a five year contract. We had a big jump this year because we had a contract renewal, I believe there's some provision for small increases in it, but not big jumps, so we shouldn't see that big jump again. And so those three items loaned were sixty six percent of the increase for this year. So while yes, it is correct, the loans will still be there, they won't go up again. Uh waste management will still be there, but it won't go up ninety six thousand dollars again, and actually Shet Street should come off. Um and then I think we we kind of already started talking about this, we should you know, even if we don't change health insurance providers, we should at least look around. Uh because a six, a fifteen point six percent increase year over year is a big jump that at least warrants us looking to justify to the town why they're staying with it. And that's my last slide, because this is the updated one.
Questions from the board?
Good presentation.
Yeah.
It's very nice.
Yeah.
Very good.
Lot of data.
I would like to see you take advantage of mentioning that we did have a personnel compensation study done. And we incorporated that in the thinking of how to grant raises to staff.
I I will, it's in there buried, but I'll I'll spend a couple words talking about it.
Other questions, Eric, moment?
At the moment, oh. Very well done.
Does anyone else from the budget committee want to add anything in particular? Yeah. And we're gonna move on to the next issue from G. Move on to the draft short term rental ordinance.
Great to meet you. Thank you.
And it's a lot of work. You guys ready? Go for it.
So back in your bracket is the short term rental ordinance, we got it back from legal with a few small changes. Of course, on the first page, they changed the date, because we were past the date we had just filling in there. Looking at a a May first start date at the passage town meeting. On page three, there's a highlighted paragraph, really, they just recommended changing how we were doing the appeals process. They recommend that if this passes, that we create a short term rental appeals board to to deal with any issues on denial of permits or permits that may need to be taken away from. And then I did have them right in there, that the split board would be the kind of the default, if for some reason we don't have a full board or people wanting to volunteer, that we still have a board available to hear those appeals. Would recommend that we create that board if we do move forward. And then the final paragraph, penalties, if you guys remember after our public hearing, we raised a lot of those penalties up. The attorneys looked through them and they rewrote in what the statutory penalties are based on law. That was really the three changes we had. The other thing they did do, and I don't think that made it in, but um we had the we had a definition of daytime and nighttime residence, and they recommended we give rid of that and just say you can have this many people or you can't have that many people.
It's a little more simple.
Yeah.
If that's not any questions, uh add on this comments? I think we can consider whether we want to put it on the warrant, under the warrant discussion, if that's okay with you, since that's we have a full discussion.
Yeah, if we wanted to have discussion now, I just wanted to bring forward what the the legal recommendations were and see if there was anything else we wanted to do with one of them.
So um you have the two thousand twenty four proposed TIF plan in your package? Pretty basic, but a while since we've had one.
It's fine, the page, but for the most part, the the big changes were the the projects that we have in there, so the on the final page, the potential TIF's object list is what the committee's really been working on. Some of them are the same, some of them we modified slightly, but if you look through the list, and I'll read through them for, so everybody can just hear what's on the list total. Uh identify and replace age nineteen oh three water lines along US Route Four. Um add or improve sidewalks within the district. The floodplain Loma study and improvements near Lovejoy Brook and US Route Four, you'll see that a couple times, we have a article on the warrant for that as well, but that's the the floodway floodplain areas along Route Four, we've had a couple engineers tell us that there's some things that the town may be able to do to minimize the impact of the floodway floodplain along the properties along Route Four. And so it's something that that we thought we should, we should look into. At first, it came on here as maybe really detailed is doing an engineering study on that, and then the committee decided to change it to this wording. So we can do that engineering study, and if there were future projects, we could move into those as well. Um Oak Grove Street upgrades, we have some areas along Oak Grove Street where the the side of the road sloughing off, and we need to look at some stabilization.
A little nerve wracking.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Um install community electric vehicle EV charging stations in the district. Identify purchase and remove dilapidated structures or properties within the district, that's something that came up kind of near the end of the TIF district discussions, and Eric could weigh in a little more as we move forward, but the possibility of actually using some TIF funds to purchase those those properties and help clean up and get it ready to to resell for economic development purposes. Identify and enable access and improvements to developable property along US Route Four and Lovejoy Brook Road. Identify and enable expanded sewer system connectivity and improvements within the TIF district. The next one's the same thing with the water system in the TIF district. Add or improve lighting and signage within the TIF district. Um I think a lot of that kind of stemmed around some of the the flashing lights at crop blocks and stuff, and then got broadened out just to say lighting and signage in particular. New Enfield Public Library Parking Lot Construction. And then, which has been approved by the voters already, that's why it stayed on the list, and then Hughes Park Community Building improvements, the type that focusing on some improvements on that that corner that we own would be important in the future as well. Those are really the the updated list, that's the the updated plan, some of it's been rewritten and changed a little bit just to to look a little meter, but overall, that's the the change, and I guess I'd let Eric expound it all if he would like.
No, I think you summarize it well, I've been answering any questions if people have them. On that.
I have a question. Like, how or when did these get decided on?
Um so there's a TIF committee that meets, at this point, we've been meeting monthly, and we'll probably, well, if this is approved, we'll probably go quarterly before, depending on what projects are happening. And so that committee with Rob's support put this together over the last four or five months.
But they're like potential, like how do they become?
Oh, um so the yeah, so the formal project, so the town meeting has to adopt it. Right, so if town meeting, if it doesn't go on the warrant, it doesn't happen, if town meeting rejects it, it doesn't happen. If it becomes there, then it, but what is the overall process? Is it basically through the budget?
And one story short, the plan will go on, and you'll see it on this year's warrant to be adopted as written or amended, I guess, but um so the plan will go before town meeting, but then each individual project will go before town meeting to approve the use of TIF funds to pay for that project, if that's something we wanted to do.
So even if these credentials are adopted.
So it can be part of the budget.
It can be part of the budget.
In the TIF budget.
We we can also do it through the budget process, but you can't spend money out of TIF if it's not on the plan.
Right.
So if there's the best project that could ever happen, if it's not here, we can't do it. So so the idea was to have a list of projects, all of which would benefit the district and benefit the town. And then as opportunities come up, you would address them, you'd have the opportunity to address them if it made sense. But it doesn't mean that all of these are going to happen.
And before it happens, it's how it's to win, and again, before it goes into class.
Um yes, yeah.
You just through the budget process or through an individual article.
Yeah. And so part of the idea of having some of the items on here is there's often grant money that requires matching funds. You have to have the funds in order to write a grant. And so we now, if this were to be adopted, we would have a pool of money where it's allowable expense, and we could say, you know, there's still a process to get the funds from the town, but we'd say we have this money available for matching funds with our grant, and if it's not in there, they're not going to accept that.
Right.
As part of it. And some of it's just like the uh the Loma study is going to be on the ballot to do it this year. You know, that's something that would bring up a lot of, well, it will answer one of the big questions around some of the most commercially zoned and theoretically accessible property in town, and it'd be good to know the answer to it.
Other questions? Yep, so let's move to the town meeting warrant. And typically, we have our moderator here to help guide, um she's not able to join us tonight, but I promise that if we had something she needed from her, that we would let her know. Um we're gonna start with acceptance of petition warrant articles. They're in your packet, and New Hampshire law doesn't allow any changes, um it's just simply something you have to accept to put on. Um, it's just simply something you have to accept to put on, so, and then the discussion is of the actual articles is held at some meetings. They have them sent to legal, and if you have questions on that, you can go over with that. But at the time, entertain a motion of placing petition warrant articles.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of placing these on warrant? Opposed, absent, and it passes unanimously? Um, we're not gonna be taking point of information. Yep, you can change the order, yep, but we can't change any of the language. No, I think let's look at the full warrant together, because that's under finalized warrant, which is next.
Yep.
Would you like me to screen you?
Yes, I would love that. So we're gonna run through these warrant articles, these are ones that are put on either for statutory reasons or because of something the select board has decided to put on the warrant. These we will be having discussion from the board and public discussion on, since there's something we are permitted to. Okay, Article one, we aren't warrants changed.
So that was Article two. You're at this point recommending not having it on the warrant. It's obviously in terms of the part that you've only put on there is a, you know, something.
And you don't feel like it's pressing on the need of this year?
No, and I have some further discussion with the clerk, I think there needs to be more discussion before we move.
New Article two.
Right, so they're renumbered now, so, okay. This is the budget article.
And if for some reason, we learn something tomorrow night through question and answer and whatever, we have our meeting, so we could put potentially put things back on. So do you need a motion on each to place it on the warrant and then another one?
No, I do not need a motion.
You can do one at the end.
If you just let us know what you want at the end, with the the entire warrant that's going to go on there. Then I do want um, motions to recommend or not recommend individually for the particular ones that you need, so the budget article needs.
You could do, you know, can they do that tomorrow?
Can we get it tomorrow?
You can.
You could do the budget one tomorrow, if you would like, or.
Instead of having to put it back on the table, I mean, it's either way.
Or you could do it now and amend it tomorrow if you want to change.
That might make sense.
I think we should do it after the hearing.
Yep, okay, yeah, we can do it either way, because it's easy enough to put it back on the table, but sure.
So Article three, uh, the balances that I have listed there are from the first quarter from the trustee of trust funds, because I don't have anything more recent. So I'm gonna be reaching out again to get updated figures, so that we have a true principal balance. And then, any accumulated interest.
If the balances are different, do we need to re-vote on that, since we have, as a board, voted on that already?
If you just vote to uh, close these with whatever the balance might be, and accumulated interest to the date for their.
I just think it's more than properly for that, but if it changes a little bit, that
We had discussed, um, since most of these are capital funds, moving into the CIP fund.
We have that coming up, and we actually reordered that before we sent it to you, if you were okay with that, and that's why we're
So we can't do it all in one?
No.
We can't do it in one article, okay.
I learned that this weekend at school board.
No, and that's part of what we talked about at the meeting, and you'll see that the CIP article is written with the original amount. And we will amend it by the amount that this is if it passes.
So the next Article four is to put the like amount that has just gone into the general fund into the CIP fund. And if that were to pass, then there can be an amendment on the floor of town meeting for Article five to reduce that amount to be raised by that amount.
Is that one more time?
So so if Article four passes, and the town meeting votes to put the eleven, one hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars into the CIP Capital Reserve Fund. Then, when Article five comes up for the CIP Capital Reserve Fund funding, that could be reduced by a one hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars, we're not using additional.
Scroll up a little bit on Art, so we can see Article five a little better, please.
And that came about through discussion at the Budget Committee meeting, that if we close those funds and roll those into CIP, then we can reduce the ask for CIP this year in term reducing the tax mean.
Right, yes, absolutely.
Article six is establishing a police recruitment retention fund and appropriating twenty thousand dollars from unassigned fund balance, which is the rollover, or part of the rollover from unexpended salary funds from last year.
Changing the article numbers confused me for a second, excuse me, going back one article. Should Art, should the old Article six say something if Article five passes?
No. Not. You can't put that in the article, we could put that in the narrative if we choose to.
Okay.
Or we can just discuss it at town meeting.
Okay, and then you just vote no, and it doesn't happen, so.
Or you don't amend it.
Or you don't amend it, yeah. So that's what I'm saying, if 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 new Article three does not pass, you just vote no on new Article four.
And we'll have all this in notes in front of us, nobody, now you'll, we'll be okay. We have good support, and we have a lot of people who are gonna remember.
All the details will be provided to you. So Article seven is the elderly exceptions, and this is where the word comes in. Do you want to have this on there, do you want to change amounts?
So the amounts that are highlighted presently, those are the old amounts.
Those are the current amounts.
Current amounts, right.
Thank you for getting it.
I personally am comfortable leaving them as they are.
I guess I'd like to do more study on the data before just changing it.
Your spreadsheet was excellent, by the way, thank you.
What, Eric?
Uh, no, I'll just, I'll just, sorry, yeah, thank you for pulling it together, Lisa, very helpful. So I went through and just calculated out the amount that was exempted from each property. The range, the, was from twenty-two percent up to there's five properties where a hundred percent of the value is exempted, and the average is about forty-five percent. Um, so that's what people are receiving today, roughly forty-five percent exemption. The thing to think about is if we expect the evaluation, the town valuation to go up, then as a percentage of their total bill, it will go way down. The value of it will decline, so the value of a fifty thousand dollar exemption is higher with a one hundred thousand dollar property than with a two hundred thousand dollar property. So that's my concern. Is that.
We don't have those figures yet.
We we don't, and and it may be that we need to wait, but I think we do need to.
We may need to do it next year.
I think we have, absolutely have, next year.
Next year.
They're going to fall behind in terms of the amount that's a very vulnerable group of our
Yeah.
town are going to experience.
Absolutely. Um, does that have to go to a town vote, or can that be done by board to select one to change?
It has to go to the town, but.
I mean, and I'm just nervous about us trying to guess what the revow is gonna look like, that's where I guess my hesitation. And I'm not saying we're saying that, I just, I worry about the folks that really need this, but I also don't know how to accurately project where they might land.
Yeah.
You do have the option of changing it a little bit this year, and bringing it back again next year for corrections.
Okay, like, do we?
You could, you could have it on it for a year if you want.
Do we consider?
I think it makes most sense to do it next year. And we really have the real figures in front of us. I think we should leave it alone this year.
I guess, and I, the flip side is, while we're considering helping a very vulnerable population that gets redistributed on the rest of the time here, so it's uh, anything that's not paid by one person, that's paid by the rest, so the tough spot. So let's put a pin in it, though, to really do a deep dive, and I know that other towns have their own interesting ways of deciding on numbers, maybe we can.
Yeah, that's the other hard thing, and we talked about that last year, a lot of times we compare to other towns and see where our income levels and stuff are at, and we did a deep dive in Claremont when I was there, and found out that most towns don't know what that number should be, and that's just an emotional decision of where to put it, it's not a data-driven decision, so we can do a little bit of work and see if we can, we can find some figures that'll help support what we're putting in there.
Okay, Article eight was put on to keep it in line with Article seven, but if we're not going to do Article seven, do you maybe want to hold off on Article eight? Question, not a suggestion?
I wouldn't recommend we do them together.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
So adopting the short-term rental ordinance, the wording that is here, it was pulled from some other town, and it needs adjustment anyway. It's under legal review, and there's going to provide final wording for that hopefully, really soon.
Do we, do you guys want to have a conversation now, whether we're putting on, or you want to come back and have a conversation on each article after we've finished going through?
I would think.
Okay.
I think we should put it on.
Yeah.
Do we have any questions on the changes that were made? And we'll go to town meeting, and it can have fair discussion in front of everyone. An input from everyone, and we'll find out what goes wrong with it.
Our plan is to rescind the authority to borrow, since we no longer need that, and if we do need money, we can ask for it another time.
I think that's, we're doing some good housekeeping.
The wording for the TIF district is under legal review, it may change somewhat, that is just to adopt the plan that you just recited. And that replaces the article that just does the floodplain engine, because it's part of a TIF. We discussed Article twelve last time, and Article thirteen is for a recreation revolving fund for youth sports. And then we come up to the petitioned articles.
And so we want to go to the top of the ones, the moneyed articles that we need.
So, while we we cannot change the wording of any petitioned articles, we can change where they appear, is that correct?
Yeah, we would like to.
I have a quick question about the fourteen or thirteen, or whatever the sports one was.
Well, it's it's now thirteen, yes.
I feel like in a previous meeting, they said that you were gonna change the recreation purposes to like sports-specific language.
Um, it was originally recre, just general recreation and recreation facilities, but that was specific to youth sports.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry, in the last sentence, it says, these funds may be expended only for recreation purposes. And I thought you were gonna change it from recreation, but like, from sport specifically.
It might be a good place to put youth sports back in again, using the same phraseology.
Yeah, and on the third line, Lisa, where it says cart, and then there's an U. The O sold us out, there we go.
Youth sports. What's that? I just added youth sports before recreation purposes.
But thank you.
Actually, I like the order there, Emma.
Petition warrant?
Yeah.
Well, the only, um, the only one that is going to be problematic is the SV two, because the polls have to be open for an hour, and it's the next to last.
Why don't we pull that one up to the top of the petition articles, so that we have ample opportunity to have the polls open while everybody else just got those.
That was gonna be our recommendation, is move that.
Unless somebody wants to hang out for two more hours at the end of the meeting.
And then everything else can stay in the order that it was received.
So it would be the first of the petition.
Yes.
Ready, we're gonna renumber again.
Yeah, well, I'll renumber. You will get a new version, nice and clean. As will the Budget Committee, because they'll have to vote recommendations as well.
Okay. All right, so we've done step one, determined which articles to be included. We have determined which order they're going to appear, so now we can vote recommendations. So I try to get ahead of myself, but thank you for the handy cheat sheet, because I. You know, we only do this once a year, so.
So you don't, if you want to vote all of the recommendations, you can, and then you can change this tomorrow, or not, if you don't have it. So it's up to you, so for the budget, if you want to, yes, recommend it as worded.
Yeah, I think we had a consensus to do the budget tomorrow, so we'll hear what everyone has to say, and we'll, we'll commit to being there.
We'll all be there shortly.
Yep, okay.
And we have the, what is now under agreeing for the discontinuing of reserve funds.
So I'd entertain a motion to recommend Article three.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Any more discussion, or we? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, that's unanimous. Article four, I'd entertain a motion to recommend Article four.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, recommendations unanimous. Article five. I'll entertain a motion to recommend Article five.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, unanimous. Article six, entertain a motion to recommend Article six.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, it's unanimous. And that takes us, I think.
You have Article.
Yeah, ten we need to do, right? Okay, um, I'd entertain a motion to recommend Article ten.
So moved.
I'm sorry, and yeah, I know they're getting renumbered.
I know, I found it.
I'm like, doing it from the screen instead of my paper, and realized I wasn't being completely fair. Sorry, who, did anyone make the motion? Johnden, okay, we have seconds.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? And all in favor?
Aye. Did we skip the one that is the short-term rental ordinance?
Yeah, you don't have to recommend that.
No opposed, no abstentions, so it passes unanimously. Do we have any more money?
Yes.
Further back, but, yep. Okay, Article thirteen. I'd entertain a motion to recommend Article thirteen.
Remove sports.
Right, we have a second.
Second.
Oh, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, passes unanimously.
One more in here, because it's a moneyed article.
Okay, because it's moneyed, um, it, this is the one, the petitioned article to raise five thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars
for advanced transit.
You will.
And it used to be Article.
It was twenty when I was. Yeah, it was twenty, right?
Does someone want to make a motion to? And we can put it on the table. And we can put it on the table for discussion, I think that might make sense.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
All moving, discussion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
I think. That is trying to short-circuit the process that we have defined for these organizations. And my feeling is if they couldn't get their act together to do it following our guidelines. I'm opposed to doing it by petition.
They didn't get their submission in, is that what happened?
I, I spoke to the executive director, he was at a primary day, and it was all apologetic. Screwed up. Missed the date. And so he had to do this process to get the funds.
Are they typically on our list? I feel like.
Yes, yes, yeah.
I mean, there were other organizations.
Oh, that didn't.
Yes, yeah. And we have definitely, as of, the budget committee has definitely declined other organizations that were late before. Which is, is that what happened this time, and they came back? Yeah.
Yeah. I just felt that he did to correct his mistake. Get the signatures required so that he create, could create a petition, and has asked that it be considered.
And, and it will be, because it's, it's on the ones.
We have to recommend or not recommend on this?
Yes, you do. If you would like to wait, you can hold off and do this one tomorrow as well, if you want to think about it.
That's a hard one, I mean, it's not a question of worthiness, it's a question of process, and do we hope.
And they're all worthy, every single one of those organizations that, that did not get funded.
And I'm absolutely fine with it going in front of the voters, and. To be honest, I'm pretty sure even if we say no, it's going to pass, but.
No, I mean, I think, I think John makes a really good point, we have a very robust budget process that we make everyone follow. And there's, you know, that's. That's probably one of the few people that uses advanced transit.
Are you about to vote against yourself?
We all get to vote at town meeting.
No, I know, I'm kidding.
But I, but I do think that, that the budget process that we have is a good one, and it's important to. You know, if deadlines stop meaning anything, then no one will meet the deadline.
I think that's harsh to say that no one will meet the deadline.
It just happens every year, pretty much.
But this one went to the extra step.
But, and, and, and they're going to be on the ballot, that's.
Quite right, no, no, I, I'm, I'm speaking specifically of our vote.
Yeah.
To support or deny, um, the petition. And I believe he did the extra step to make up for his mistake, and other organizations did not do the extra step.
And I think it varies town to town, so there's some, in some ways a custom for other towns just doing it, but.
That's how we do it.
Yeah, no, I know, I think we do have a good budget process, Mike, I saw your hand up, did you?
Well, the regional subcommittee, the budget committee, and our subcommittee chairs here also. I don't like this, I'll talk about it more tomorrow. The only reason I don't like it is that when your subcommittee meets, we go through all the applications carefully. We consider what the organizations have asked for in the past, whether they're increasing their request or decreasing it. We consider. How much of their service is leading the, in Enfield in particular. And because when an organization doesn't meet the deadline, we don't have the information to make. Um, you know, a good recommendation about whether to fund that organization. So, somebody missing a deadline, and putting a petitioned warrant article to get their money. Skips our process and gives them unfair advantage, because they can, they can plead directly to the emotional. Make an emotional plea directly to the legislature, rather than coming through us, where we can evaluate it. In comparison to the other organizations that, that are requesting.
Just as a quick question to Mike, is it, I, because it's been a while since I've actually looked at, I did the regional subcommittee a long time ago, you did as well. Either of you could answer, how often do we take the requests and say, I know you asked for, let's just say eight thousand, but it looks like. Over the years, you've asked for this, your presentation says this, so we'll give you seven, or is that a common thing to do?
I defer to my subcommittee chair, Mrs. Green.
Oh, surely.
Um, I would say, I would hope that select board would support the budget committee's process. We try to treat everyone the same, if they haven't offered them their material. There, they get several, uh, in the way. And this isn't that, I mean, this is someone that, and I'm, I think unfortunate advantage taking it to town meeting. Where they'll get sympathy. And it, it's not treating the rest of people right.
To answer your question, the years that I was on it, yes, there were adjustments made based on the subcommittee's evaluation to the requests. I think, I think I did it two years, in both years, there were changes to the requests based on the information provided.
I see Mr. Data in front of us.
So.
Also noticed Dimitri.
So advanced transit has, in the past, gone five thousand four hundred dollars for the last. One, two, three years. There were two organizations that had an incomplete application, and therefore were not given any awards. That is separate from the organization that didn't submit at all. And those were three of them, so essentially, five organizations. Did not submit at previous awards, or had an incomplete application, and there's, those five were denied. Um, they include advanced transit, V and H. Uh, West Central Services. Headrest, and actually the Moscoma Community Health. And so I would agree with Mike, that this is kind of circumventing the process, and it's putting the other four organizations that are burdened. I had a disadvantage, and like tomorrow, I will vote not to support it.
Especially since, you know, the, we, we have created this committee, and we have tasked them with, with, with a tough job. And I, I, I think that we, I don't want to under-touch the committee either.
And I believe it is to remind them, we actually tried to connect, we, we tried to contact them.
Oh, yes.
And remind them, please submit your application.
They are.
And so.
There's plenty of opportunity to get the information in, and you just have to expect the people to follow guidelines, rather than not consider.
That thing's really helpful, so we have a motion on the table to recommend, so we're going to go through the usual process.
I think we just opened the discussion.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion to recommend.
Okay, make a motion to recommend, then we'll have a second, because we still have to vote yes or no to get it on to, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so, and just, I know that we've recommended the other articles, but a recommend means it goes in the front row, right? And not recommend goes in the second column, and I hope you won't abstain.
And when you recommend, you're recommending passing and not passing.
So, so that makes sense.
But no matter what we say, it's going on the.
It goes on because it's the petition article, and that's.
Right, but it's going to reveal our vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you say yes, you're saying, yes, if you say yes, you're saying you recommend taking, supporting this article, and no is.
And you're not committing your vote on town meeting day, this is a vote whether the select board recommends.
Okay.
Passing it then.
Okay. So, all in favor of recommending? Opposed?
Nay.
Then nay.
Nay.
Okay.
Nay.
And then abstentions. So it is unanimously not recommended.
Thank you.
I, thank you for enduring this process and for helping us a little, I know Enfield is very nice about often agreeing things, so it's. Sometimes takes a little extra minutes for us to say no. But, uh-oh. Oh, that's the last one?
That was the last one.
Okay. I was like, oh gosh, all right. So, okay, so we've got the warrant finalized, we need to set a public hearing date for the SB two warrant article, and there is a legal. Timeline in which we have to do it, so you want to tell us what it was here?
Well, it has to be, uh, between fifteen and thirty days from the date of the vote, so. So it, it has to be between February fifteenth and March first, and since you have a meeting on the twentieth, I would just recommend you have it at that meeting.
Will this room be large enough for the expected? Population?
Do we move to the community building? I mean, I like the idea of making sure we have enough physical space for people, this is a very nice crowd, I'm happy to see them tonight, and I think. There's going to be more interest, um.
Yeah.
Community building.
Oh, figure something out, okay. So, are we okay with the twentieth?
Yeah, the twentieth is fine, but what day of the week is that?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yeah, we're still in that Tuesday land, which is always confusing to me this time of year.
Uh, twenty is holiday. Not necessarily, I'll be out of town that day, I should be able to call in.
Okay.
But it's possible that.
If we're at the community building, there is no, uh.
It, it's fine to have it without me, I'm just saying, I will be out of town.
We might be able to figure it out using.
Or we could just squeeze more people in here?
Um, well, the other option of to use.
It's more important, it, it's more important to have enough space than it is to have a way for me to call in.
We'll do it weekend, though, I think we can figure it out. Okay, strategic planning, review and discussion.
So I put a. So can we let the budget people leave this long?
Oh, I'm sorry, they're hanging, uh, yeah, I mean. You're never a captive audience, so. Yeah.
There's a news, I'm going to call it a news.
What time that meeting is going to be?
It's their normal schedule. Six, six o'clock. And we'll want the public hearing for the first thing.
Yeah. Yeah. So thank you all for coming, by the way.
Thank you, we were picking you up.
I put an updated strategic plan in your package, not a lot different, but from the last meeting. Some of the feedback was to have an executive summary, which I put together and put them there, and then there were a few other, other meetings throughout that. The plan, a little bit of minor edits, I did recommend, and did not add it in here.
Hey, guys, if you have side conversations, you're welcome to go have them in the hallway, but I need to be able to hear Ed, and I gotta get video online, please. I do appreciate it's a long meeting.
So I did send this to you as well, with the removal of the appendices. As we said last meeting, those were working documents, just to help you guys remember what, kind of the thought process, what you guys came up with in the meeting. I do think the document looked a little more professional, without those on there. If, I would recommend we, this be the strategic plan, if we want to post the working documents online or something, for people to see, we can do that. And we could easily put a disclaimer at that point that they're not proofread and professionally put together, that they were just working documents that. Are not processed. And then we can also update appendix C, which is more the working plan, to be a little bit more. Proofread and professional, if we wanted that out there as well, but that, like I said at the last meeting, that'll be changing. Probably a lot more often than it should, but as we, as we find things and fine-tune and get dates, we'll move dates. It's more a working document for staff, and they'll organize what they're going to be working on in the next year or two.
I like the idea of posting it with maybe a watermark, like, and then flatten it, so that it's very clear, it's. A working document, not just writing working document up top, but a watermark get across, um, because.
Well, and we can put it on the title for the link when you open it, too, to say this is a working document, it's not proofread.
Right, because I mean, some folks might want to take a look back at it to understand that process, but the, the real guidance is, is here. What do you guys think?
I think that the, the plan is very interesting and thorough. The plan, as we have just received it last Friday, needs additional editing. There's some nomenclature errors and numerical errors in numbering of a few things, but. I think it would be good if it could be posted for the public to see, and perhaps with the appendices, although frankly, I don't consider that as crucial. While others may. Um, and then at a, another meeting, we could take a vote on accepting it.
Yeah, I'm not ready to adapt, you just say I haven't had, I just frankly, I haven't had time to go through in detail, and I want to send a couple of comments back.
Do you want to put this through to, um. One of the March meetings, or what would be?
That, that would be my preference, because I won't be here the next meeting.
Yeah. No, I, I know, and that's why I would think, I give everybody time to get their comments, get them to add, and have a little bit of time to do that work. Solid, very solid start, but.
Oh, yes.
Um, you know, and I think one of the things that's important, and I talked to Ed about this, is there are things that I've heard. I'll call them whispers in the community, oh, they're going to do this and that, strategy isn't a train to the future, it's a strategy, and. Strategy does change, so they're ideas, it's okay to have ideas, but, um, yeah, I want to change them, too. So, March, forward to March?
Or eighteen? Or eighteen?
Eighteen.
The eighteenth meeting?
Uh, February?
Of March.
Oh, of March, I'm sorry, I'm like, we haven't looked it up, I think we have.
Tends to have a meeting, uh, that follows the town meeting.
Yeah, I would like to try to get it done before.
What about the fourth?
The fourth is fine, I won't be.
Okay, you won't be here? Do, but you'll set, you can, they'll give you time to weigh in, okay?
I can also send this to you guys in Word format if you want.
Track changes.
Review and track.
That would be nice, we appreciate that.
And that would be helpful.
That would help me a lot.
So everyone's homework is to do a track changes, write your comments and questions, and send it to Ed. Let's go, all right. Um, we have an administrative item in our packet, which I think we just end up having to sign on. And that brings us to other business to come before the Board of Selectmen, and so we are in public comment, and I'll remind everybody. And try to stick with public comments, and have them three minutes, um, the public comment from folks that will hear in front of us. Let's start first. Let's go ahead, Steve.
Steve, panel, so my question is about how much. CRP, I'm sorry, CRP, the guard cost does in the future. We choose to pay five cents, but it's going to be now.
The proposal is to add the five cents like we have been. All along, and then the other recommendation is if those. Capital reserve funds close, and we roll that money in, we actually reduce the amount by about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So it'll be less than last year, but that'll be. I mean, we're, the overall plan is to continue adding that nickel away, like we've been doing.
Could you just clarify how the initial appropriation is calculated? In other words, the TIF fund increases by a nickel on the tax rate.
On the CIP.
On the CIP, excuse me.
So it's last year's plus a nickel on it.
What was the original amount found, do you know?
Yes. Dan.
Right here.
Thank you.
This was the original amount, when this loan got paid, that was the original amount that was put in, along with, I think. The cost of one cruiser or something like that, but originally, when this building was paid off, that's what was used as the base.
As the base number.
For the CIP.
Okay, thank you.
Wasn't there sort of an idea that at some point, that we'd stop adding the nickel?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then.
Inflation and.
Yeah, right. We, in, well, also the last three years, we've used cash.
Yeah.
As opposed to financing, which, this year is a good idea, because. The, uh, interest rates are purely high. This will be the third year in a row that we haven't used financing, I believe.
Except for the two buildings.
No, no, they're not part of CIP.
Those are buildings, they're separate.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other public comments from the folks in front of us. Kurt?
Uh, Kurt Fadots. Um, I've been watching the Budget Committee videos, um, last few weeks, uh, Harry Vance. I would like to know, is there any dollar amount the select board would consider to be significant enough to help reduce the budgets? And if I'm willing to consider one large item, um, would the select board be willing to uh, consider either several smaller um, items, um, and aggregates to help reduce or cut the, uh, the budgets? And one of the questions that was asked at the, one of the previous meetings that I didn't quite, didn't really get the answer to, uh, wasn't, the question wasn't asked the way I was hoping. On the transfer station is the two roll offs that are used for regular trash and the recycling trash. Now, I understand the tipping fee is going to be the tipping fee no matter where the trash gets picked up. But there is, it was stated that there was a extra cost for those roll offs to be trucked to wherever they're going and then returned. And that's a separate item, I believe, I heard, if I heard correctly, in the facility budget of contracts. And I didn't hear what the truck that caught is for, for a time they leave or, or the annual cost, which is what I'm really more interested in.
Jim estimated it at the last Budget Committee to be about ten thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
Or just, just the trucking portion.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So your first question was a smaller, large item.
Well, well, actually, the first question was, is there any amount that would be considered? Because every time something's presented on the public, the comments are, well, it won't do anything to the budget. It won't have any effects.
I don't think that's really accurate for, I, I think the position certainly of the Budget Committee and as far as I can tell from the select board has been not that it won't make any difference, but that the things that we are budgeting are essential for proper running of this town.
So the budget comes from the Budget Committee. So we're going tomorrow night to hear the Budget Committee's public presentation and to listen to the public in that discussion. I personally feel that it makes sense that we learned something mind altering and wonderful that we could magically do. We could certainly consider that we have not voted one way or another yet. I don't personally have any large item to pick on, nor do I think in my capacity as more of a policymaker, that it's my job to pick something out of operations and decide. Now, if somebody from the public feels like they want to tell us their opinion, we're here to listen. So that's just my thought. I don't know how you guys feel.
Well, express my view.
Yes, I know you have. Does anybody else have anything they want to add on that?
I think the Budget Committee looked at everything line by line and to use a poor term, racked their brains to come up with items that could be removed. Not so much looking at it from a dollar perspective, but looking at those services or those costs that could be cut or brought down in cost. And they did their best to do so. We were able to find some revenue sources, which helps. And they were also able to look at all the budgetary line items and had good discussions on all of it, I felt. And, and really did, line by line. And I think even before these numbers came to the Budget Committee, the departments and the department heads worked pretty hard at trying to, and, and the town manager worked hard at trying to get the numbers down. Agreed.
Okay. Does anyone follow comments?
It's gonna be really short to get in your three minutes. Yeah.
No, can't be out talking in like three minutes.
Oh, no. I stopped it. You've got about thirty seconds.
I understand, but the, the, the process, the difference between Budget Committee and the Select Board, Budget Committee only does the year to year, what's presented to them and the line by line. Well, the Select Board can do policy changes that will have a major impact by seriously reducing, eliminating where the Budget Committee cannot do that. Um, that's, I mean, that's that's why I'm talking to you right now.
Brad, George or Hannah?
Uh, Brad Rich, with all due respect to, to John, some of us on the Budget Committee are not in support of this and disagree on various line items. I, I, I granted I'm in the minority, but with all due respect. I also think to say that the Budget Committee is the responsible for the budget really isn't accurate. Maybe that's the way it's intended to be. But the budget in fact is put together by Ed and the department heads and we sort of review it. And, and we don't have line item vetoes, right? We, we really can't say, hey, this is it's, it's, it's a little, it's a sentence on words, but it just doesn't feel like it's our budget. It certainly isn't my budget. There are plenty, plenty of places where I think that we should cut to Kurt's point and I couldn't convince anybody. So I, I realize that I'm in the minority. No problem.
So that, that is interesting to me. This is my first time going through this process. And it's my understanding that there's been this, you know, months long process since October, going from the department heads and Ed and everyone coming up to you. I did the minutes for it for two years. And so it's arduous.
Yes.
And so I, I I have been thinking about this so much. I'm watching the, the Budget Committee meetings to think like, you know, is my role now to sit here and redline the work of that has gone into this with? It's just something I'm thinking about. I don't exactly know where I sit yet.
The discussion at this table would be hard to do now, but it's more, you know, do we want to make major changes to service levels? You know, do we want to look at staffing levels, which will change the amount of service we can give? Do we want to change those? And that's the policy level decision making that can happen at this table. Then it goes to the Budget Committee who looks line by line at what we present. And if something doesn't look right or something looks high, we can have the discussion of why that number needs to be what it is or why we presented a number that we presented. And then, I mean, we did go line by line. They got the line item budget. When we go through it department by department, we try to highlight mostly so we're not here all night long. We try to highlight any major change up or down in those line items and, and point out what, what that change was from and what we're doing there. And so we, we give that, we have the discussion, we go through the budget. And then we had a few meetings of overall discussion of, you know, here's what the tax rate looks like, here's where we're at, what should we be doing? How should we make changes?
So are the, the recommendations that we made, last question, are the recommendations that we made here tonight, are they final or can we change our mind after we hear what the Budget Committee recommends?
Well, we didn't, yeah. I mean, we can definitely go back to any one of those articles if you'd like to. Uh, you didn't vote on the budget.
Right.
Yeah, you'll do that tomorrow.
Recommendation.
Yeah.
And, and it's possible, but it doesn't hap, I haven't seen it happen anytime in the recent past.
Well, I've definitely never seen.
Yeah, no, that sometimes the select board can come up with a different budget.
Yeah, the select board can put forward.
We can put forward our own budget.
Has been done.
I know it's, I know it's been done, but it's not like that recent.
It was all about road saving, wasn't it?
Salaries too.
Yes, too.
And so, you know, it's, it's if we had a significant difference of opinion, we could and had, I wouldn't say that without data support.
I don't mean changing the budget. I just mean changing my feelings on the recommendation after hearing.
Yeah. Well, and tomorrow you, you can, it, it will be your chance to listen again and.
Since we haven't made any recommendation yet, we don't have to worry about.
You can marinate on it online. And then again.
Tomorrow, after the public session, then we can decide how we support the budget.
If, if you want to make a change to a different article, all you have to do is make a motion to, you know.
If you voted in the affirmative, you can put it back on.
Whatever article it is tomorrow when they're all renumbered and I get your name.
Thank you for your patience and all the learning.
No, that's, I mean, I think this is a cooperative effort. So, um, Dave, you've had your hand up?
I think Brad will try to follow up first.
You just quit. Um, I'll, I'll be under three minutes, I promise.
You're gonna be under thirty seconds, right?
So really, it, it's really, we're talking about a balance between what we're asking the taxpayers, right? In terms of another large increase in the, in the tax rate versus services, right?
Absolutely.
It's always the, the.
And if we were to hear a ground swell of people saying, we want less, we'd be moved, I'm sure.
My personal view is that we should go back, we should go back to the department heads and we say, we'd say sharpen your pencils. Try to do better. Try, try to go back and try, make an effort, an effort to look. There's plenty of places, none of them easy. None of them easy, what I'm suggesting, but that was my point. I'm done.
I think we've already done that.
Yeah.
That's what I was told. Yes.
I would say I would not cast any assertions on them not having done it. Okay, Dave, you were next.
Um, yeah, the, the point of information that I was making.
Yep, David Botha.
At least from my old eyes, uh, it was, uh, impossible to read, uh, what was on the screen in terms of what the article being discussed even, much less the order of, uh, uh, the petition warrant articles, which was the main thing that I think. At the last, uh, select board meeting on the twenty second of January, the order of P uh, of, of the petition warrant articles discussed. And Mr. Klug, I believe it was you who said that the P that articles should be in the order received. Uh, there was no other discussion, uh, motion or no vote, but there was certainly no objection either to voice. And, uh, the four, uh, petition warrant articles that we submitted were certainly timely. And I believe the first four submitted. And I still don't know what order you have for petition warrant articles based on what you projected today.
And we can get you a copy, right?
Yeah, they are in the order of.
And you're always welcome to move your seat if you need to stay.
They are the order of being submitted minus the change that was made tonight to move the SB two one to the front because of the reading.
I need a strong thing for that. Thank you.
Any other public comments from the folks in front of us? Okay, any public comment from folks online? You need to put your hand up if you have an online comment and then unmute. Okay, I see no motion on you to put your hand up. Online, um, I believe there's no other business other than signatures. Send those around. Oh boy. And and probably while we're signing, do a motion to adjourn. I'm just worried that I'm gonna sign my name on and something that's like these aren't public.
A tax name, yeah, on, on your own.
Although I don't think I would sign. I think that might be a conflict of interest. Might be, actually, I mean, I would, but I'm pretty sure it's a conflict of interest.
Or just too big.
Recording because we have a lot of.
But not.
Are we in the title, is that property on May Street? Is that?
Hey, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Abstentions, I mean, not abstentions. Abstentions. We're adjourned.